I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara. Councilwoman Iacilli.
Here.
Councilwoman Pell.
Present.
Councilwoman Scavoni.
Present.
Thank you. Well, we're going to start the meeting with a presentation from Tom Houghton and Nick Jimenez of the concept plan for the Mill Road property for a potential site for the West Hampton Community Center. And certainly, thank you.
Is this seven in here?
Happy Leap Day. It's February 29th.
It is Leap Day.
Yes, the councilor's.
Excellent. Okay, so we're going to keep...
Very excited to see the new...
Oh, my gosh. I think you have enough for everybody.
Concept, so sketch, picture on a paper right now.
Back of the envelope, right? This is something we haven't seen yet, so this will be very interesting to see what you've come up with.
But we have to stop somewhere.
Yes, exactly.
I think there is. I'm just going to let them pass down and then I'll go through.
So what do you have before you? Three sheets. The first sheet is an estimate. We can flip that to the back. We'll talk about the estimate later.
Okay.
Second sheet is a conceptual site plan of what we are proposing based on the conversations that we've had with the various departments that would inhabit this building. And then the third sheet is the existing conditions of the property with the lot lines drawn on top, just so you can see the different lots, the flag strips, where the Parks Barn currently is, which lot. That's on where the greenhouses that the school utilizes and just the amount of vegetation that's on the site as well. So in looking at Sheet Two, where we'll spend the majority of our time.
Sheet Two.
Sheet One is on the second with improvements on it. So Nick, our Capitol Project Manager, put together a conceptual site plan for a dual-use building, a senior community services portion of the building as well as a recreation and youth services wing. We split these up based on the restrictions on the property. The one lot is a general fund lot. We can pretty much do anything on it. The other three lots are CPF lots, which require that the function be tailored to some sort of recreational activity. So by situating the intersection of those two wings on the lot line, we're able to apportion the different uses to the different lots, even though they would be one continuous building.
Could you just identify the three CPF?
Yes, so the three...
Three CPF are going to be the greenhouse.
Okay.
The walking trail.
The walking trail, sure, the one that just has a trail on it and...
The Parks Barn.
Parks Barn.
Got it.
Quadrant one, four, and three.
Thank you.
Oh.
So we located associated parking for each use on that respective lot, which is a key component of this layout. We can't have, like, we couldn't fill up the entire general fund lot with like a 40,000 square foot building and not have parking like that. The parking for that use has to be on that property in order to meet our zoning regulations.
I need to orient myself. Are you saying that the town property is the one with the parks built on it already?
No, that's incorrect. If you're looking at the conceptual site plan, the senior community services wing is on the town parcel.
So top... The general services one is the east, the front east.
Yeah.
Because that's got the bulk of the parking on it, so I just didn't know if they would...
Well, the bulk of the parking is associated with the larger recreational building. So you'll see the parking is sort of proportional. The senior community services wing, we're looking at about 4,000 square feet, and we have 34 parking spaces associated with that. And then we have a recreation and youth services wing with 60 parking spaces associated with it, or 63.
That can go up or down, too.
So we can play with that a little bit. But the parking spaces are proportional to the size of the wing and the use of the wing.
Tom, looking at Nick, how you have this laid out, it looks like the clearing on these parcels is going to be kind of minimal, I'll call it.
We will be clearing the northern portion, the front two lots. The remainder of the lots, we don't expect to clear anything. We're going to try and work the walking trails within the existing cleared area. It's a very level site. We don't imagine any topographical challenges on there.
Oh, great.
We have a lot of, a lot of grass area currently on there right now that we can locate in sports courts or bocce courts or playground areas in. So we imagine minimal clearing on the back two lots, and we're going to have to do a fair amount of clearing on the front two lots, but that's necessary in order to construct parking areas and buildings and to provide an access or a improved access to Mill Road. Right now, it's not improved. It's essentially a dirt driveway that the Parks Department uses to access the existing maintenance barn. So this is really just a sketch draft layout to make, to try and keep the Parks Barn and to create enough parking for these two wings and in order to situate these wings on the dividing line between the different types of properties that the town owns on this parcel. So we would definitely still need to go out to an architect to really further develop what the shapes of these buildings are, how they're laid out on the interior, and to determine the required utilities associated with these buildings as well with the HVAC and the electrical services and the sanitary systems and any associated drainage as well. It is in the village, so we would be going through the village. It's not, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oneck divides, Oneck divides the town and the, one side of Oneck is the high school.
So we're good then. Sorry about that. So we looked at, if we want to flip to the first eight and a half by eleven sheet, we looked at a really, really rough cost estimate in order to improve this property with a use such as what we proposed on the conceptual site plan. We used a pretty conservative number for the square foot, cost per square foot of a building of this type. We have not determined whether it's going to be a stick-built, steel-built, constructed offsite, imported to the site. We have no intent on the exact type of construction for this, but we utilized the dollar value of $850 a square foot, which is conservative, but it's also realistic for a building to be built in 2024 from the ground up, and it would include the parking areas and any type of drainage and utilities.
All-site plan preparation, engineering?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does not include the design. That's a, that's a construction number, that $850. So from there, we looked at approximately a 10,000 square foot building between the two uses. We're looking at around eight, eight and a half million, depending upon the fine tuning of how much floor area we actually need. Is the building, when we go to architecture design, going to be exactly 10,000 square feet? It could.
Could not.
Could be a little less, could be a little more. Just really broad numbers on this. We added some money in for site work just because there will be some clearing.
The trails, so that could, that's up to the board whether or not that's included in what we'll call Phase One of the actual building. Are we going to do the trails? Are we going to do bocce courts, playgrounds, so on and so forth when we build the building? Or is it going to be a second phase?
Well, the CPF director told me that they could pay for the trails, but not the bocce courts.
Got it. So I mean, that's a cost savings that we can realize right there. But we're just kind of looking at really high 10,000 foot, well, it's a 10,000 square foot building, but I was trying to say that we're flying over the site right now looking at what this cost might be.
It's hard to get pin it right down.
Yep. So we added a contingency in there just because of, there are cost increases as this project will develop. There is inflation. The 2024 cost of this building will be different than the 2025 or 2026 cost of this building, depending upon the construction market, whether it's labor or materials.
If it is constructed offsite, do you imagine that that would be more cost-effective?
There are advantages and there are also disadvantages to it. I mean, we could realize savings on labor, but we might not realize any savings on material.
Right.
So, and then on top of that, we typically budget a design fee of 10% of a project in order to take care of the architectural services, the surveying services, the mechanical, electrical plumbing designs, all that.
That's the million dollars there?
Yeah, essentially.
Which for this, since it's such a large building, it wouldn't, I mean, there's plenty of firms that are not going to charge a million dollars to do a building like this.
It could be at 6%.
Do you think you're overestimating a little, just for the sake of...
It's, I mean, that's the, that's what you estimate. That's what you, worst-case scenario, but I would imagine it would be closer. I mean, ceiling-wise, 250 to 300, and that would be high.
Okay.
We don't want to come in and say it's going to be dirt cheap and then have to come back to you later and say it came up. So we're using essentially industry-standard percentages to come up with a good budget number for this project.
And to your point, the $850 a square foot is for either a, well, it's a build-on-site price.
Right.
So if we did go to some type of a prefabricated model, it would...
The labor would be cheaper.
Yeah, the labor would be cheaper, so it would decrease modestly, we'll say.
There are still things that you do need to do on site, like you can't build a foundation offsite and bring it in, and all the drainage has to be done on site. So we're really talking about the actual sill up of the building.
If we wanted to, I guess the architect will find out if we can do solar on this, solar panels on it.
I absolutely expect to be able to do solar on this. I expect to incorporate heat pumps for this building.
Geothermal?
Maybe not geothermal. We're going to electrify it. Electrification is an advantage to the town. It helps us meet our carbon-neutral goals, and it's also advantageous if we can produce enough solar electricity on site in order to cover our electrical bills. So we would essentially be able to, depending upon our insulation level and all that, we would determine the electrical draw of the building for both heating and cooling and then hope that we have enough roof area, well, we would design all this, but we would attempt to have enough roof area to put enough solar on the building to then offset those fees and hopefully not have to have an electric bill.
And also design it, design it bottom so it's low maintenance.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's our goal. We want our building maintenance personnel to really, to be able to easily maintain a building. So that's changing your air filters and your HVAC system. It's kind of keeping up with cleaning the building, but I mean, we don't want to have to be there every other week.
Yeah, fixing stuff.
Yeah, and especially, especially with the amount of buildings that the town currently has. So if our new buildings are well insulated, plenty of lighting, the, we have high R-values, we're on, on the right track, so.
With the sustainability concerns that Councilman Pell indicated, I think that an educational component inside a community center is imperative. Let the world know what we've done and how they can do it in their homes, so it's a good opportunity. Is this being considered, and I believe I know the answer, with the Community Preservation Fund? In other words, three of these lots are CPF funds, so what we are doing here is in conformance with our own code and state statute?
We have been given assurances, but we have not received that in writing.
Okay, so, right. But this is recreation and, you know...
Yeah, we've been given assurances that this is in keeping with their requirements and regulations.
CPF reviewed it. They told us this is what we can do. We're just awaiting the memo to solidify it, and then we'll, we'll move forward.
I believe CPF, checking, they'll be meeting with someone in the field to just review it as well. It's something that we could actually also, we've been talking with the other five towns about reinstituting the CPF advisory, Regional Advisory Board, which we need to do. So we get that fired up, we can have that review by this advisory board, whatever form it takes as well.
Right. That machination moving forward is going to have legal counsel in conjunction with a board from the five towns to...
Right, right, whatever.
You know, make calls on projects, not just this one, but, you know.
We have a discussion next week.
The key when looking at this plan is to remember that if there's something that jumps out at you that you don't like, that you think would be better, please let us know because that's the point of this, is to get everybody thinking, and we really do value the input from the board from the other departments.
Personally, I like the design. Would these two front-end buildings, would these be two floors?
No, it's proposed as a one-floor building.
One floor, okay.
That could also be refined in design.
Once you start going into two floors, now you need elevators, so it's another maintenance item that we'd be looking to remove from the equation.
Well, we do need to keep the buildings separated by a wall with a door or a breezeway, right?
Yeah, I mean, once, once we get the final opinion from the advisory board to CPF, then we'll, we'll review that and we'll make sure that we exactly conform to that.
Yeah, move the building a couple feet either way.
Yeah, I mean, it, we're just, once we have that, then we can really get our sketch in an acceptable location, but, but then we need the, to continue with funding to actually bring the, the design professionals on board that are going to be able to put this into a rendering and to create the floor plans and to really make sure that this building works. Because right now, we have two rectangles.
Yeah.
We need to go from two rectangles to architectural plans in order to actually have something that, that can be constructed.
Yeah, because we still need to determine the actual style of the building. Is it going to be a modern building? Is it going to be more of a classic type of...
To fit the neighborhood.
Kind of, yeah, exactly.
Fit the neighborhood because it's a...
Do we want a colonial to kind of match the schools?
Right.
Yeah.
That's what will be hammered out in actual design.
Yeah, we'll have to take it to the people.
So the building that's currently there, the pre-existing building that's being used by the parks, right?
Yes.
So that's scheduled to stay on-site and use, and...
For storage purposes, yes, unless we're advised otherwise. If it's determined that the board would like to see that removed from the site, for whatever reason, then we could always propose it to be demolished.
I think it's advantageous to keep it there just because parks will have to maintain the actual grounds of this building.
Oh, I know why we need it and use it and all that. I'm just wondering, with this configuration, is it still appropriate to keep it there? Or should we move those operations somewhere else? Because it becomes...
Because of how we need to centralize the two masses of buildings around the lot line, I mean, I don't think that this barn will be in the way. If we do keep it, though, I would recommend that we paint it and...
Do some upkeep to it. Looks kind of shabby.
We could also plant around it so that you actually don't even see this barn anymore.
I'm speaking more to the use for community preservation properties. This now kind of changes that use a bit, and I think we need to look hard at that. You know, we may have to, and I'm not, I like this building, you know, and I don't want to do work if we don't necessarily have to, but we may have to the way that this...
I think there's an existing opinion.
If this is really for reservation, for recreation, we may not want to have a parks yard in an area that's dedicated for recreation.
Well, isn't it already in the CPF?
Opinion, yes.
It's already in a CPF quadrant here?
Yes.
The building.
Right. I remember the building was on this property and it was kind of adopted, you know, for a particular use. Just, that's part of this.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really for CPF to determine. If that building is now no longer allowed on this parcel, then they should advise us as such and we can remove it, or they can advise us that it can remain and we can keep it. We want to stay within the letter of the law of everything, so.
Yeah, definitely.
We're, this all depends on CPF, and if CPF is really going to guide what we can do on these pieces.
Okay, good.
This doesn't move forward without that happening.
Do you need two separate, separate, separate systems for this?
That's going to be as per CPF as well. I mean, I, I don't imagine that we would need two separate, but I would imagine potentially just putting them on the general piece. That would remove any restrictions so that, like, we could have the CPF flow go onto the general flow, but I don't believe that we could do it vice versa, but it'd be advantageous to have one system as opposed to two.
Put the new system in.
Yeah, I mean, those are all things that we'll need to look at. We'll need to consult with CPF. I imagine that, that their opinion would, would address all of those things, or if it does not, we could ask for clarification.
Yeah, because that's, it's a good thing to put inside, like Councilman Scavoni said about education with the new system.
Is that included in your price?
Yes. So the $850 includes building the building, the ancillary parking for the building and all that stuff, utilities, HVAC, plumbing, electric.
We'd be looking to do an IA system as well for this, so.
Yeah, and that would come, that again, is a product of design more than anything. Where are the bathrooms in the building? I know the scale on this is kind of dwarfed, but it is rather, I think...
It's a large building.
It's a large building, so if you have a bathroom on this side and a bathroom on that side, it might not be logical or cost-effective to have the one system and pipe it. Maybe it is.
We'll need to take a look at that.
Yeah, you might be able to put the bathrooms closer to each other.
Two small systems as opposed to one massive system with lift stations.
We have external piping, manholes. There's, there are ways to do things that we can then get it to one system, or we might decide that a dual system is advantageous depending upon our flow rate. We might be able to optimize and have two very small systems, two minimum-sized systems, as opposed to having to round up to the next size tank. So we'll be able to take a look at that.
When we were talking to the, you know, the youth director and the senior services director, and just about the configuration of the buildings, it seems like, you know, we're calling this the senior and community wing and then the youth and recreation, but the, the one building on the town property can be the building where the meals are served and community members can have meetings, like the American Legion.
Yeah, we could have a warming kitchen in that wing. We could have offices in that wing for both youth and seniors. Any uses that are not recreational in nature, we envision to be on that side.
So I didn't want to just designate it. I mean, I know you probably just put that as a talking point, but it's not just for the seniors, right?
Yeah, once this is built, it'll have one name, and you'll go inside and it'll have wayfinding. So, you know, kitchens this way, Legion Hall is that way, so on and so forth.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you'll be able to walk in, again, assuming that this is what we built, right? You'd be able to walk in this entrance and still get to this side and vice versa.
Yeah.
It won't be like, oh, I have to park over here to go get a sandwich and then...
Yeah, because you don't want to have to have the seniors have to put their coats on just to go get the lunch. But then the other building, the larger building, would have recreation for both, like the stretching tone and the chair yoga for the seniors, and then the, the youth would be in another portion of the building.
Yeah, so youth services is, youth services, that's, you know, what Tracy or what Lynn spoke about. And they would have their... Oh, Joe Pettit's wife, Laura, Laura, excuse me. So you'd have a counseling room. You would have the, I guess, video game room, stuff more geared to children that, hey, if a senior wants to go play video games with the, nothing's going to preclude them from doing that. But it's just more geared towards the youth services.
The younger crowd.
Correct.
Plus, we can have our, when we take our town board meetings on the road.
I like that it's got so much space for outside seating, picnic area.
Yeah, to get people talking, but you could do so much more in this back area here.
It's nice to get outside.
Depends how much budget is available, but it can be phased where, again, if we build the building first with minimal amenities outside, in subsequent years, you can go to that playground. I mean, this shows bocce courts, but you could do more...
Additional sports courts?
Yep.
To that nature.
Maybe a small basketball court, something along those lines.
You have basketball courts over here.
You could put on the walking trails the...
Exercise equipment.
Yeah, you know how they have that. What do you call that?
Fitness trails.
Fitness trail.
Yeah, so that's our idea of what, of what this site could look like, but...
Now, the other site was about 12,000 square foot of usable space, wasn't it?
Give or take.
Yeah, between the first and second floors, not excluding any double-height ceilings or anything, and it also excluded the basement area, which we weren't improving with any living space per se.
So it's approximately, approximately the same size and the same cost?
Yeah, and I mean, we're hoping to realize some efficiencies with a ground-up space as opposed to trying to fit a youth space or a senior space into an existing building. It's always challenging designing around existing walls, existing bathroom layouts, so we're able to, hopefully, once the design professionals onboard, to actually start to make everything flow.
What is the exact cost difference, just as a, as an, you know, an edification to the public and as well as a reminder just to the town board with the previous plan?
Well, we've spent approximately $8 million all in on West Hampton right now, right? Or at least that's what we've...
No, I mean, that's, we have, we have the purchase of the building. We have the design professional, and then we have what construction might have cost. I don't, I don't know how to give you an exact comparison.
It's quite hard to do that.
Was it $4 million purchase price and $4.5 million for the bids?
Something on bond.
And then...
Then you had another heat bond in there, too. Whatever you bought, you had to spend money on the heating.
But that all came out of the same, that all came out of the same budget line, if you will. So I believe it was around eight, eight and a half million all in.
Yeah, and this is great. It's the same cost. I mean, it's...
It doesn't factor in a potential sale of the building, like, we don't know what that's going to come in out, and it's, it's going to be extremely difficult to nail down.
Plus, there's more, you have outdoor space here. You have more uses of the building.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You have more room for expansion.
Yeah. I'm just asking in terms of what the, you know, the COC West are going to be asking about that. So we want to make sure that we have that information.
So the size is a couple thousand square feet smaller, but then we're gaining all the outdoor space.
Yep.
And the price is the same.
Much more functional.
Yeah. We, Jim, I know you asked for some appraisals on the overhead road building. Did we happen to get anything yet?
Reading it right now.
What?
I have it right here.
Oh, my gosh, hot of the press. Everything's seeing it for the first time. Well, that's good because then we can put it out there. I mean, a couple of people have called and expressed interest in it, but they want to know what the appraisals are. And then we market it and see. We don't want to be left owning that, you know? So everything is contingent on everything else.
You did great work with this. This looks really good.
Thank you for putting this concept together.
It's preliminary, I know, yeah.
This picture on a, in a price tag, but everything can change, so.
Sure, sure.
We expect it to change, to be honest.
Yeah, right.
I do not expect to build this, so...
Tomorrow.
But good imagination, though.
No, I mean, the layout.
Yeah.
I expect the layout to change, for sure. But yeah, I mean, just let us know once we're funded.
Yeah, we have to, when Cindy gets in, we'll talk about it on next step.
Okay.
One of the things, yeah, one of the things I see is that the greenhouse from the school is here. The, the, I don't know if that's the middle school. I think it's the middle school. And somebody mentioned that that would be a good opportunity for intergenerational interaction because when the students go over there, the, the seniors could join them.
And they could learn.
Yeah.
At the greenhouse, yeah.
You know, seniors probably have gardens at one time, and they get, at age, can't have it, but they can go watch.
Or help plant things.
I think they have a lot of experience in all those things, seniors.
Yes, we'll be there ourselves.
Everyone enjoys gardening.
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, we'll get that written opinion. We have that from the CPF. We'll show this to them. I don't know what they're going to, what their thoughts are, but I just know that one of the things they said was that the building can't be just one large building. The, the building can straddle the lot line and either have a breezeway or a wall with the door. So it looks like that's what you...
Yeah, we intend to tailor the construction and design of this building to that opinion.
Yeah.
None of this happens without that.
Yeah, we don't want to...
Yeah, is there a preference for the type of architecture?
My personal...
Something to just start thinking about, maybe.
In my personal, I think I should go, match the neighborhood, match the community, you know, whatever the majority is. But, you know, I'm only one out of five.
Just know the schools are very colonial with the columns and all the brick.
You don't want something with...
I don't know if we want to go that route, but if you want to go more modern.
Yeah, you don't want, it's something to stick out.
Yeah, so once we have someone onboard, we can start to look at that, come up with some sketches and, and have that discussion.
But the younger people like, you know, they might want something different.
Yeah. And then, I mean, we're going to have Dorothy talk to us about, our comptroller, about, you know, the money, what, what, you know, she's talking to the bond council about what can happen with the proceeds of the sale of the other building and the money that we've bonded for, you know, the construction upgrades. So she's looking into that.
Well, we hope to get this done soon because the people in West Hampton are waiting.
Yes, they are. They're anxious to have it happen. Well, anybody have any other questions at this time? Thank you so much for jumping on this because time is of the essence.
Thank you very much.
Really, with the young... Really, the only other thing we have is updates today. If anybody has any updates.
Yeah, I have a couple.
All right.
Just to remind the board that at the Steinbeck House, we did have our visitation from students, high school students from all over the town at Steinbeck House, and it went well, and there were members of the Michener Center of UT, and we were actually, I actually announced this on the day that it was happening, and so it was in conjunction with the Steinbeck Committee as well as the John J. May Memorial Library. The kids got a lot out of it, and, you know, so, special thanks to the Michener Center and the volunteers at the Steinbeck House to make this happen. And we're kids from West Hampton, Hampton Bays, Bridgehampton, Southampton, Sec Harbor, and East Hampton, so that's great. And we also got volunteer docents from that, and everyone, if you would like to volunteer as a docent at the Steinbeck House this year and summer, there are spaces open, so we need people.
Okay.
Yeah, also, once again, we have a group that we've been doing here in the town for six years, called Youth and Government, they're going to be going up to Albany from the 20th to the 22nd to present bills that they have created on the floor of the Assembly in the Senate. I'm proud of them, they were working last night, and we are ready to go.
That's very exciting.
And thanks, yeah, and thanks to the Youth Bureau for putting this on Peter Struckers, doing a great job, and Tracy and the rest of the staff, Tracy Colson.
Have fun, when is that trip?
It's the weekend of the 20th, 22nd, 3rd, and 4th. 750 kids from around the state.
Wow.
Go. And find each other, it's great, transformative.
We'll want to watch that, I'm sure it'll be video, too, great, we can see.
That's a good idea, we, it's really quite broad, there's three different branches of government that operate in different parts of the Capitol throughout the weekend, so it's actually challenging to film the whole thing.
Well, we want to see our Southampton people.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great, good idea.
Well, last night, Councilmember Iacilli and Councilmember McNamara and I went to the Town of Southampton Police Department Annual Awards and Special Recognition Program, and it was, it was very nicely done, and congratulations to Officer Robert Gerstaker for his Officer of the Year Award, and to all the other recipients, and they're doing a great job under the leadership of Chief Kiernan. And yesterday, we had the first-of-the-year East End Supervisors and Mayors Meeting, and for the first time maybe ever, there were five new supervisors, so it was interesting, it's a great program, you know, that we all can get together with all the mayors too and talk about concerns. We had some speakers from the hospital come and discuss how, you know, like everyone, they need housing for their employees, and discussing how we can partner with them, and we talked about, we had an engineer talk to us about stormwater and drainage, and that was actually very interesting, and just some updates from the legislature. So that's, every other month, we have those meetings. And then I did meet with Tom Houghton, our engineer, and we talked about where the trustees had their space here in the building that, that they vacated, that those offices have been fixed up and newly painted, and they're ready now, we're going to move the planning department people into there, and that'll make space for the electrical and people that, inspectors that are in the auditorium to move into the planning space, so a little bit of shuffling around, but everybody's going to get some more space.
Much needed space, I'm glad to hear that. I know we've been talking about it for quite some time.
I know, the tight. And Frank reminded me that there's a National Fire Protection Association is presenting a webinar on how to safely integrate renewable technology into your facilities, which is an important topic for the town, and we've asked that the webinar be recorded so it can be shared with any interested board members, with the fire marshal, and the consultant that we recently hired for the best installations, and this will be an important webinar for us to all watch.
Yeah, I've signed up.
Yeah.
Bill, do you want to? Do you have any updates, or you could go?
You can go first.
Okay. So, I guess just one, a couple of things that I have, had a conversation with Assemblyman Fred Thiel. He, you know, we spoke about the Traffic Mitigation and Safety Task Force, which we've passed, and we hope to have our first meeting in April, and the reason why is because March is going to be a busy season for the Assemblymen, and the Assemblymen wants to play a role on this task force and help us out.
Oh, excellent.
He, you know, he has the option to appoint a designee, however, he himself wants to attend the six meetings that we will be having and serve on this task force, which is great. In addition to that, and we're going to be talking about this a little bit later today, the town board has the opportunity to appoint a member to the task force from the business community. We're going to be talking about that, I have a couple of people in mind, and we'll share that with the board. And in addition to that supervisor, you have an appointment, you can appoint yourself, or you can appoint a designee. So, you know, that's sort of where we are with the Traffic Mitigation and Safety Task Force, which again, we hope to launch in April.
That's excellent.
Yeah.
Can't wait to get started.
Yeah, and it'll be good too, because as April, as we get into April, we're going to start seeing some traffic issues, so that's going to actually, I think, be most informative to the board as we start to...
I think it's now.
You know, well, we're seeing it now too, yeah, of course, but, you know, we're going to see it worsen as we head into the summer, as we all know. Also, just a note on the Disability Advisory Committee, we, I met with Jamie Bowden and Sean Cambridge, who's one of our town attorneys, but also our ADA coordinator, and we're going to do some slight restructuring of that committee, and we hope to have an annual event, a service fair, in the downstairs auditorium, so that folks can come to the town to learn about all the different services that are available for folks with special needs. In particular, you have public sector services that are offered through Suffolk County DSS, you have OPWDD with the state, but there are tons of other private sector programs that are available as well to help people with developmental disabilities or physical disabilities get, get jobs, counseling, a whole host of different services, and I'm really looking forward to what we're going to do with that committee going forward. And Jamie Bowden is also working on a document that will post on our official webpage so that people can also click into different services, it'll be, there will be hyperlinks within the document, so if you're interested, for instance, what Silo does, self-initiated living organization, they're, they used to be called Suffolk Independent Living Organization. If you're interested in what kind of services they offer, you know, our document will have their information, and then you'll be able to click into it and go to their website and learn more about what they offer, so that's a very, that's going to be a very valuable resource to our constituents, so.
That sounds like all good things.
Yep.
Thank you, Michael. Oh, I forgot to mention that there's a, the Southampton Animal Shelter Foundation is having a fundraiser, Spaghetti, on Saturday, March 2nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Elks Lodge, 605 County Road 39 in Southampton. $40 for an adult ticket, 45 at the door, $20 for a child ticket, so if you are free, please go and help support the animal shelter.
We will be there. We will be there.
We will be there. All right, well, if anyone else has anything to report, I'd like, I'd move to close the meeting. And to go into executive session.
Second.
Well, wait a minute, I need to go, for contracts, confidential legal advice, acquisitions, personnel, and litigation.
Second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.